I'd like to call the April 11th, 2013, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nedsa.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Our first order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of March 11th and March 14th, 2013. The March 13th joint meeting with the school board and supervisors of James City County, and the budget work session of March 25th, 2013. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve the meeting minutes from March 11th and March 14th, 2013. The March 13th, 2013, joint meeting with the Williamsburg-James City County School Board and the James City County Board of Supervisors, and the budget work session March 25th, 2013.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nedsa.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our next order of business is matters of special privilege, and today we have one of those times when we get to recognize one of our own. And this is important because this recognition comes from their peers, and it is important to the city that we have employees that, you know, serve our citizens and serve them well. And this gives us an opportunity to recognize those who do so. So today we have an Excellence in Service to Williamsburg award to be presented to Deputy Police Chief Andrew Baker. Andy, if you would join me, Barker, if you would join me at the podium.
Let me read this. Let me read this, and then I'll present this, and we have a plaque for you, so I can give you an opportunity to decide. City of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Andrew D. Barker for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Deputy Police Chief Andy Barker has served the citizens of Williamsburg diligently and honorably for over 29 years as a sworn police officer. He is currently responsible for leading the entire uniform division of the police department according to the exacting standards of national law enforcement accreditation. Chief Barker also runs the training program for the department and excels at mentoring and developing less experienced police officers. In addition to his primary duties, he prepares and implements detailed operational plans for all manners of special events and dignitary visits to Williamsburg. His ability to coordinate with event organizers and with state and federal agencies in order to safely manage complex special events and visits is a tremendous asset to Williamsburg. Chief Barker holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and numerous law enforcement certifications. He is known as a man of personal discipline, unassailable integrity, and approachable sincerity who upholds the highest ideals of law enforcement professionalism. Chief Barker's dedication to excellence in serving and protecting the people who live, work, and visit our community is in keeping with the highest ideals of public service in the city of Williamsburg, dated today and signed by me as mayor and Jackson C. Tuttle as city manager. Andy, congratulations. I just want to have a plaque for you to put in your office where ever you like, and now if you'd like to say it, as mayor and members of council, Mr. Neller, Chief Slocum and Slokey.
I'd just like to thank you and the members of the Williamsburg team, and especially my wife and family, for the last almost 30 years now of having what I would consider a very enjoyable career and opportunity to serve the city of Williamsburg and to actually enjoy my job in working here as much as I would as if it was pretty much the people that know me, it's almost like a hobby. I'm here all the time. I very rarely go home. So I'm usually, if you know me, not at a loss for words, but today I seem to be that way, so I'm just going to leave you at that.
Thank you. Thank you. Having had the pleasure to see Andy at work in a variety of situations, I think this is terrifically deserved, and we really appreciate all you do for our community. In addition, as a matter of special privilege, I'd like to just take a minute to recognize Amber Kennedy, who has been reporting on city council and the city for the Williamsburg-Yorktown Daily and for Tide Radio for the last four years. She's leaving us to take a job at the Peninsula Fine Arts Center. That combines her journalism degree with her art degree, so she's really excited about that. We will miss Amber. She's been a terrific member of the journalism profession and has professionally covered the city of Williamsburg, and we appreciate all she's done. So just a quick recognition there. Our next order of business is public hearings, and we have two today. The first is, deals with the 2013 Comprehensive Plan Downtown Planning Area Implementation Proposed Ordinances 1305 through 1312. Mr. Nestor, I believe you have some information.
I have a short report to give you. This is the first round of implementation changes for, based on recommendations of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by city council in January. These changes cover the downtown planning area in eight separate cases. This is the future land use map for the downtown planning area. To orient you, Duke Gloucester Street, College Corner, the Stryker Building is right here, Municipal Center, Hospitality House, Law School, National Center for State Courts. This is an aerial photograph of the same area, again, Duke Gloucester Street in the center. And this is our current zoning map. The red is the B-1 district, Duke Gloucester Street right here. Pink is the LB-1 and LB-3. The oranges and yellows are residential zoning. The first case, or the first two cases really, deal with residential scale and character. The Comprehensive Plan states that there are two parts to residential scale and character, and that both need to be considered in planning for the future of the downtown area. The first part is building massing and location, which is governed by zoning regulations for setback, height, parking, and so forth. The second part is density, which must fit within the building envelopes delineated by the zoning restrictions. The Comprehensive Plan recommends that to encourage appropriate downtown residential growth, a uniform base density of 14 dwelling units per net acre should be established for the downtown commercial and mixed-use land use categories implemented by the B-1 Downtown Business District and LB-1 Limited Business Downtown District. And that is the B-1 shown in red, the LB-1, this is our existing LB-1 area, and we have two new LB-1 districts proposed for rezoning. The area on South Henry Street down to where South Boundary Street cuts in, and the Blatton Building lot. Increased density would be allowed in these zoning districts with a special use permit by city council. Specific limitations for density increases are not listed because they cannot address the unique characteristic of individual sites or housing types, nor the fact that some properties can support more density than others. All of these characteristics, as well as the quality of the building and site design, and how they relate to the immediate surroundings and to the downtown planning areas a whole, need to be taken into consideration when ruling on these special use permits. And that's a quote from the adopted Comprehensive Plan. And what I'd like to do quickly is go through a series of slides just illustrating the range of densities we have right now in the downtown area. I won't read any of these because the densities are clearly stated. The overall density in the downtown planning area is 1.7 units per gross acre. And if we would add 200 additional dwelling units, that would get us up to only 3.1 units per gross acre. But this series of slides goes from the lowest density to the highest density. The revisions to this, and I'm talking here about case PCR number 13-001, which pertains to the B-1 and LB-1 districts. The proposed zoning ordinance language says that "In addition to the criteria specified for special use permits, city council shall consider the quality of the building and site design of the proposed development, and how the scale and character of the development relates to its immediate surroundings and to the downtown area as a whole." There have also been some related changes proposed for the statement of intent and for the front yard requirements in the LB-1 district. The next case, PCR 13-002, also deals with density. This is for the RDT Downtown Residential District. Here is the Law School. This is South Boundary Street, Councilors Close, and Mimosa Drive. And outlined in red is the same district on an aerial photograph. This case revises the zoning by maintaining the base residential density of eight dwelling units per net acre, and allows the maximum density to be increased with a special use permit. The current ordinance has a up to 14 units per net acre with a special use permit. The revision includes the following language to assist in the review of special use permits. "In addition to the criteria specified for special use permits, city council shall consider the quality of the building and site design of the proposed development, and how the scale and character of the development relates to the surrounding neighborhoods in the area." And again, just to refresh everyone's mind about the densities in the area of this rezoning, we have Councilors Close with eight units an acre, and I'll just go around. Some of these were in the slides I just showed you, but this relates them specifically to this proposal. The third case, PCR 13-003, adds new provisions for senior housing. The Comprehensive Plan supports provision of senior housing in appropriate locations at appropriate densities, such as on the Blatton Building Lot on Scotland Street. This case creates a new definition for senior housing. Adds senior housing as a special use permit use in the LB-1 district. Creates a reduced parking requirement of one space for each two dwelling units. That's the same as the existing requirement for housing for the elderly and physically handicapped. So essentially, we're just, the regulations are essentially remaining the same, but the nomenclature is changing. The fourth case, PCR 13-004, expands and revises the downtown parking district. This district was established in 2001 and last expanded in 2007, and is intended to allow the development of new businesses without requiring additional off-street parking. This has been a successful regulatory tool that has allowed the establishment of many businesses that would have not been allowed under the standard parking requirements, including the Cook Building on Scotland Street, Brickhouse Tavern is in that building, Mad About Chocolate, Master Craftsman, Dog Street Pub. So this has been of much benefit over the years in encouraging new business in the downtown area. The Comprehensive Plan recommends extending this on the west side of South Boundary Street. This is in the area that's proposed to be rezoned to LB-1 Limited Business Downtown. And this is adjacent to the P-6 pay parking lot at the corner of Francis and Henry Street. It's also proposed to be extended to include the LB-1 portion of the Blatton Building Lot, which is also recommended for zoning change. Several text amendments are also proposed to the downtown parking district regulations. One would add the senior housing requirement that I just mentioned. The other would eliminate the requirement that existing spaces cannot be reduced. The next three, the next four cases are rezoning of property. The ones I've just reviewed are zoning text amendments primarily with the map expansion of the downtown parking district. These are actual rezoning of property. PCR 13-005 rezones South Henry Street between Ireland Street and South Boundary Street, and this is the area here subject to the downtown parking district expansion. And that's the area on an aerial photograph, Center for State Courts, Bi-Centennial Park, the Verizon Building, and the Diggs Building on the corner of South Boundary Street, to get you oriented. The 2013 Comprehensive Plan designates the west side of South Henry Street between Ireland and South Boundary, which is this area here, as mixed-use land use to be implemented by the LB-1 Limited Business Downtown District. The plan states that this will match the mixed-use area north of Merchant Square and will allow additional flexibility for development and redevelopment in this two-block area. Retail and restaurant uses will be allowed in addition to the office uses now permitted. Base residential density will be 14 units per net acre and can be increased with a special use permit, and that's what I talked about in case 13-001. This case rezones approximately 14.3 acres on South Henry between Ireland and South Boundary Street. In addition to the west side, we've included the National Center for State Courts and Bi-Centennial Park because they're zoned RS-3 at this point, so this just makes the zoning consistent. The next zoning case is a small one-lot rezoning at the corner of Boundary and Newport Avenue. It's now zoned LB-3 since our last Comprehensive Plan. This property has been developed. There is a duplex dwelling on the site. The zoning immediately to the north is RM2 multifamily dwelling district, and it's proposed to rezone this to RM2 multifamily to be consistent with that zoning since it no longer needs to be designated as an office zone, which was the case with the LB-3. PCR 13-007 rezones 613 Scotland Street, the Blatton Building property. And this is the rezoning on an aerial photograph, the Blatton Building at the corner, the First Baptist Church, Christmas Attic subdivision, Braxton Court, and the municipal building in the background. It's proposed to rezone the Blatton Building proper LB-1, and then the tail, so to speak, rezoned to RS-2. And there's a small piece of property that was rezoned many years ago to provide parking for the Triangle Building. That was never implemented, so that little piece of B-1 zoning needs to be eliminated in any case. The Comprehensive Plan designates the Blatton Building area, this area here, as mixed-use land use to be implemented by the LB-1 Limited Business Downtown District. The plan states that "To help satisfy the need for senior housing, the Blatton Building Lot should be designated mixed-use land use, which allows a base density of 14 dwelling units per net acre with increased density allowed if the scale and the character of the project properly relates to the surrounding neighborhoods in the downtown planning area." This also allows the option of a mixed-use development on the property with senior housing as a major component. So there were rezoning this as proposed to two categories, LB-1 for the Blatton Building and RS-2 for the area between the First Baptist Church and Braxton Court and the Christmas Attic subdivision. The final case is to rezone 218 and 220 North Boundary Street from LB-1 to B-1. And here we are on an aerial photo. You see the library at the top, the Imperial Building, Colonial Sports, and this is the area that's proposed for rezoning to B-1. The plan designates this entire block, except for the Kenneaman Townhouses, as downtown commercial land use to be implemented by the B-1 Downtown Business District, and this case zones two of the lots that need to be rezoned. And we're currently reviewing in the Architecture Review Board a plan for a redevelopment of this portion of the property and consolidating everything into one lot. So this is consistent both with the recommendation of the Comprehensive Plan and the redevelopment project that is currently underway. The plan also recommends eventual rezoning of these two lots when needed for redevelopment, but it does not recommend a rezoning of those two lots at this point. And this brings us back to the future land use map for the downtown planning area. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this at their meeting last month. 14 people spoke to public hearing. Planning Commission recommended to city council by a vote of 5-0 that these eight cases be approved to implement the recommendations of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan.
Reed. Thank you. Thank you very much. What we're going to do from this point is first come to council for any questions for Reed. Then I'll open the public hearing, and that will be a time when anyone who wishes to speak to any of these cases may do so. After that, I'll close the public hearing and then come back to council for discussion and action. So let's start with any questions at this point for Reed. Reed, I think you've done a very clear and comprehensive discussion of a very complex set of changes. Thank you very much, Reed. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to come forward. If you do, please state your name and address. I have two speakers cards, and we'll start with those. The first is Mark Rinaldi. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, staff, and audience members, my name is Mark Rinaldi. 4029 Ironbound Road. I appreciate the opportunity to again address you this afternoon. Not so many weeks ago, as council considered the revised Comprehensive Plan, there was clearly broad support from a wide variety of constituents for the concepts embodied in the plan. Council's adoption was unanimous, as I recall, and the city staff set to work preparing the implementing ordinances that would transform that plan into the possible. Since that meeting, the city's planning commission carefully considered these ordinances before you today, and also recommended them unanimously for your approval. So the table has been set. Many are hungry for the various courses being served up this afternoon. Others, having concern over the unknown, or perhaps more aptly, the unfamiliar, are pushed back in their chairs, eyeing the table with some skepticism, wondering if they have the stomach for this feast. I might suggest that there's something for everyone here today, but everything may not suit all tastes. That's to be expected, whether within a family, a community, or a nation. But in this city, because of its long history and its exemplary citizenry over the centuries, there's precious little that can be said to be truly novel. Significantly higher-density housing exists in various sectors, and business uses have been interspersed with housing with great success and comity in a number of locations within the city. What is being proposed is not truly new or different. Rather, what has worked is being expanded modestly, and what has proven not to work, i.e. actions, whether deliberate or unintentional, that have led to the depopulation of the downtown areas, is now seen for what it is. If I may, I'd like to share a small bit of history from over 300 years ago that I shared with the planning commission. Don't know if any of you had the opportunity to hear that, when the city was seeking to become the capital of Virginia, which I have borrowed from colonial Williamsburg's 1999 Colonial Williamsburg Interpreter volume 20, number two. And I quote, "On May 1, 1699, five students of the College of William &amp; Mary appeared in front of the combined general assembly to argue that the gentleman should designate the settlement of Middle Plantation as the capital of Virginia. The third student speaker summarized Middle Plantation's merits, noting that it already could boast of a church, an ordinary, several stores, two mills, a smith shop, a grammar school, and above all, the college." He also acknowledged the many important men who already made their homes in and around the settlement, noting that "Here is a good neighborhood of as many substantial housekeepers that could give great help towards the supplying of a constant market." The simple notion that homes support commerce was recognized over 300 years ago as a convincing argument for Williamsburg to become Virginia's capital city. With the modest refinements to the city's ordinances under consideration today, the former colonial capital and still proud city of Williamsburg can continue to supply a constant market for its lifeblood businesses, and in so doing, create a dynamic, walkable, and livable city center that will remain a source of community pride for decades to come. The only thing that is constant is change. Cities must adapt as changes occur around and within them. So with the table set, I will say my blessings and ask that you please serve up the changes that the city needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. The next speaker's card I have is Terrence Wheel. Terrence, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Terrence Wheel, 412 Harriet Tubman Drive. Dear members of council, there's a long history of your constituents in the Christmas Attic neighborhood opposing rezoning the Blatton Field without a specific development plan. Recently, the neighborhood was encouraged by the work of Assistant City Manager Jody Miller and Executive Director Andy Hungerman, who proposed a development plan that provided for both elderly housing and preservation of green space. We're also encouraged by your past comments on this issue. The Blatton property rezoning before you will destroy in time not only a treasured city green space, but much goodwill as well. Currently, adding additional residential units to this property requires a special use permit. That is a public hearing. No retail is allowed, except for that small sliver of B-1 that Mr. Nestor pointed out. The current zoning protects this property for additional elderly housing units and protects the green space because it requires an SUP. The new zoning plan eliminates the requirements for a special use permit for additional development. It will establish the right to build retail, including city buildings, banks, offices, restaurants, general retail, and off-street parking. It will establish the right to build 16 additional units. These could include single-family, duplex, townhouses- townhouses and multifamily units. In addition, it adds to the special use permit process a much larger retail potential and many more potential residential units. With an empty 25,000-square-foot medical evaluation center, a near-empty Housing Authority retail building, a vastly underdeveloped high street and many other vacant retail properties, we see no need for this rezoning. And please remember, this rezoning will carry on into the future long after you've retired. This is why we're registering this protest as explained below. Those of us in the Crispus Attic neighborhood whose homes abut the Blatton Building property are protesting the scheduled rezoning. This protest is based on the right to do so as outlined in the Williamsburg ordinance. We count the number of protests to be a sufficient number to require council to vote four to one in favor of changing the text or title of the Blatton zoning district in order to pass the proposed changes. The city's Chapter 9 ordinance leaves some ambiguity as to what rezoning means. It appears that the planning department makes a distinction between what is called a rezoning, an actual change in the name or label of a zoning district versus the change to the text of a zoning regulation, which is referred to as amending. If it came to a legal decision on whether this protest covers both named and textual changes to the Blatton property, we believe that a court would also count a change in zoning text. Here we refer to the changes and the proposed zoning changes to the RDT density as a zoning ordinance as described in this chapter. So I have given the, I emailed and have given the original copies of the protest for you to, for the record. And so that's speaking on behalf of the protest. I'm going to ask you for your indulgence to speak on my own behalf. And that is, one of the changes in here with the RDT changes to reassure the citizens is, as Reed pointed out, Mr. Nestor, that you should consider how scale and character of the development relates to the surrounding neighborhoods. That might not give me as much security and others when you consider that the Health Evaluation Center, which is a massive 25,000-square-foot building, one of the reasons that it was approved is in the minutes, was that it was proposed that it met the character and fit in with the surrounding area. And anyone who looks at that building and the buildings next to it can see that's a bit of a stretch. So I'm not, I'm not second guessing the judgment at that time. I'm just saying that's a very subjective statement, which is easily overcome. And then a little quick history of the Blatton Building. If you remember back in 2006, it was proposed by the Housing Authority to build an office building and a maintenance shop and to cover that much of the field with a parking lot. And the community put in a, you know, protest for that. And because we had to go through the special use permit process, one reason, it never came about. Under the LB1 zoning, as I read it, you would have that by right. There would be no special use permit process. You would be able to build the office building over that. When the Blatton Building was created, this is from 1980, October 14th, they approved the conditions, 38 elderly housing project. I'm quoting, "It was further suggested that if the parking standards are revised, that approximately half of the parking shown on this new parking lot be retained." Mr. Mettler noted that the Housing Authority has indicated that they will take the initiative to lower parking requirements. Now, why did they do that? I maintain it was to maintain the green space. They didn't want to fill it up with parking and they wanted to keep the beauty of that area. And so going back a little bit further, 1973, the development plan for the entire area, June 14th, resolution, City Council, for the redevelopment plan. "Such approval including findings by the governing body, subject to this, number four. Said redevelopment plan gives due consideration to the provision of adequate park and recreational areas and facilities as may be desirable for neighborhood improvement with special consideration for the health, safety and welfare of children residing in the general vicinity of the site covered by said plan." So at that time, they were looking at the field and wanting to have an area preserved as park. So lastly, I want to go back to your own comments on the Blatton Building property. A year ago during the campaign, you answered a number of questions on the Blatton Field property. And that was whether the zoning should be changed to allow other things, whether it should be a permanent park or whether it should be some mix. Ms. Knudsen, I think the city should continue to pursue in addition to the Blatton Building. There's no mention of rezoning or mixed use. Clyde Holman, "Only possible change would be an expansion of the Blatton Building to help meet the needs for the housing for the elderly and disabled. If an expansion is done, it should minimize the impact of the property with most of the property being either green space or a permanent park. If expansion is not possible, the property should be left green space or made into a permanent park. No mention of rezoning or changing the text of the zoning." And Mr. Fryling, "With a more efficient use of the site, we can house more elderly and disabled residents. We are desperately in need of such accommodations. By concentrating the residential use in one area of the property, we can leave another open. The resulting park could be a much desired amenity to the residents of Blatton." So again, no mention of rezoning, especially for any business. Having been refreshed of these facts, I'm confident you will vote not to change any existing zoning regulations concerning the Blatton Field. I'm confident that you will follow your earlier positions to protect this property as future expanded elderly housing and green space and park, the uses for which it was always intended and for which it is currently zoned. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Terrence. If anyone else wishes to speak, would you please come forward, state your name and address? And typically, we ask people to limit their comments to three minutes. Yeah, please. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Donna Coggins and I live at 686 Counselors Close in Williamsburg. I'm speaking to you today in regards to PCR-13-002, the land around South Boundary and Henry Street. I am respectfully requesting that you do not vote to increase the residential density in that area. The current zoning is appropriate for the area and we should leave it as it is. Some say increasing the density will allow building housing that will attract young professionals to our city and I am all for that. I have two sons in their twenties whom I would love to have live here. As a matter of fact, I've asked each of them if they would consider living in Williamsburg. And guess what the first question that they asked me? It is not, "Where will I live?" It's, "Where will I work?" So I do not believe that providing greater density housing in that area and building it for young professionals, sadly, will not bring them here if there are no jobs for them here. I do believe, though, that increasing the density of housing in that area would allow for student housing to be built. And I do not see that providing housing for the students of the College of William &amp; Mary is one of the goals and missions of the city of Williamsburg. It is certainly a charter of the college and one which it is doing quite well. It recently, of course, acquired the Hospitality House and I understand that with that, they no longer have a waiting list of any students that are wanting housing and cannot find it at the college itself. Also, I believe we have plenty of rentals in that same area of South Boundary and Henry Street that currently aren't even being utilized. For instance, there was a property that was for rent at the corner of South Boundary and Newport that did not rent all first semester and finally did rent here in January. As I go by campus courts, I currently see a "for rent" sign out. So again, we have unused housing in that very area. We certainly don't need to add more of that similar type. So in reading the city's goals, initiatives and outcomes for 2014 that I found on our websites, I do see that the number one goal for the city is to protect and enhance Williamsburg's unique character as defined by its residential neighborhoods. And I am counting on you to fulfill that duty and to protect the neighborhood that I live in by not increasing the housing density in that area. The current zoning will allow for development of that area to add housing that would be commensurate in value to the neighborhood that I live in, for instance, which is Counselors Close. And the goal of growth can still be achieved. We would also agree that waiting for a specific proposal to be submitted for development of that area and then evaluate it on its merits. If there is then an opportunity to rezone in order to approve something that everyone agrees is the best possible use of that land, we support that 100%. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, City Council, residents of Williamsburg. Am I speaking to the mic? Curtis Alexander Mills, 711 Richmond Road, Williamsburg. And I rise today real briefly to speak in as strong terms as I can in positive affirmation of Planning Commission's recommendation and the direction I hope and sense that council is going to. I can't quite as easily rail off the history that the first two gentlemen mentioned today, but I would like to hope that I'm echoing my peers from 1690 or 1699, who encouraged Williamsburg to be the capital of Virginia. While obviously the stakes aren't quite as high today, I think we could do a lot of good work with this proposal. I would like just real quickly to the gentlelady who just spoke to contest the claim about there being no more waiting list of William &amp; Mary. I think that's neither here nor there and shouldn't be why you consider this motion, but I would like to contest it. The purchase of the Hospitality House, as I understand it from the president's office, is, will allow for them to take certain dorms to be offline, to renovate them. So it'd be more of a process. There's still a waiting list to get on to housing at the College of William &amp; Mary. Sorry, I forgot to mention, I am the student body president at the College of William &amp; Mary. And this is actually my last day in office and I couldn't be happier to be here because it's something I feel very strongly in supporting. I've worked with the mayor and his staff all year. We've been meeting. We've been talking about the Comprehensive Plan. There was a public hearing. The Planning Commission voted 5-0 for it. I think it's consensus-based piece of legislation. I think it'll be really good. And I think it'll be really good for three specific reasons. First, density increases of this nature, I think that most recently happened three years ago. I think it's been a sterling success. I think, you know, you can base future action on the past, based on the demonstration of past success. And I think in this specific instance, this would work. I think it's a pretty moderate density increase that would be overwhelmingly popular, yes, with the students of the College of William &amp; Mary, but with residents here. I mean, you know, students are residents, non-students are residents, retirees are residents, young professionals are residents. And for everyone I've talked to, you know, this seems to be very popular. The second thing that I think it would do is increase safety for anyone who's not currently meeting the density requirements. I don't know if it's that many people. I really can't speak to that. But if anyone wasn't meeting, was in violation of a density requirement, being, you know, under the letter of the law, under city supervision, makes it so much more safe if they have any problems with their domicile or houses. And then third, I think this would be an incredibly positive statement about us being one community here in Williamsburg. Yes, student, renter, renter, non-renter, whatever you want to call it, I think it's consensus-based legislation and I urge you in the strongest possible terms to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Anyone else wish to speak? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Betsy Jo Spence and I live at 614 Counselors Way. First of all, I would just like to say that I respectfully disagree with an earlier statement of gratuitous representation that implied, if not specifically stated, that all wise and reasonable people to this point have unanimously approved increased density, while those less qualified who were questioning it did it expressly on a skepticism of the unknown and unfamiliar. I think that Ms. Coggins has very well presented the feeling and position both on a personal and community basis for Counselors Close. There is no question that just on a very basic level, traffic, parking noise would increase with new development and with increased density. You know, that's known, that always happens and a lot of that is good. That's not a problem. But there, it can come a point where it is a problem. But PCR-13-002 will likely result in the development of rental units. Rental units can lead to a transient community, which by any definition lacks the vested interest of homeowners for their neighborhoods. As a result, adjacent neighborhoods, such as Counselors Close, where the proposed units would be almost literally in our backyards, suffer immediate negative consequences as well as significant reduction in home values over time. Consideration of an increase in density beyond the currently allowable eight units per net acre is at variance with any interest on the part of city council to maintain the integrity of the peaceful character of the Counselors Close neighborhood. To take a pleasant neighborhood nestled among trees where the neighbors within and outside the community are respectful of each other's privacy and convert it to an urban space of high density is wrong for the city as well as for the area residents. We urge council to vote against any zoning increase by special permit under the PCR-13-002 proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Caravelo. I'm a resident. I'm a student at the College of William &amp; Mary. I reside on campus. Thank you all for hearing me speak today. I've watched this process since the beginning of the academic year, watched it go through all these hearings and I feel like I need to say that this is, this plan is going to be for the absolute benefit of everyone in Williamsburg. And I'm just going to add a few of the reasons why. The increased dwelling units, the mixed-use developments and alteration in parking restrictions are things that the city should be welcoming with arms wide open. It's going to help foster a vibrant community for students, for residents and help attract the young professionals that would like to settle here and live here and be a part of this community. There have been a lot of concerns about the character and scale and it's my understanding that that's codified within the city laws and that that isn't something that's really going to be much of an issue with this plan. But the passage of these ordinances are going to enable a healthy discussion about specific new developments. The Architectural Review Board, City Council, Planning Commission, we're all going to be able to look at each individual development as they see fit and see if it fits the character and scale, if it's appropriate to be built in the city. So this plan isn't going to automatically result in student housing popping up everywhere throughout the city. It's just going to give us opportunity to discuss and see what's the best way forward for the community. And looking at that, I strongly recommend that council votes yes on this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Would anybody else wish to speak? Yes, please. Welcome.
Hi. I was going to leave my yellow sunglasses on to attract your attention because I have my yellow paper before me. Those of you that have heard me speak before, pro Stop 22, I thought I was kicking back for a while, but I've decided I am here to make my folksy contribution. And having listened to some of the people speak, I think about my granddaughter. When they leave Counselors Close where I live and say, "Grandmother, those people still have beer cans in their yard and they don't shut the door. Well, you need to do something about this." I'm here because I'm a green space girl. And this is my statement. I'm sorry, I'm going to read it to you. I wrote it this morning when I woke up with my allergies. Closings, turnovers, empty places. Are we diminishing the character of our city? Who's happy about what's being built? Probably the people who own the property. Shouldn't we keep and respect as much green as possible instead of increasingly being a raise and build city? Wherein lies quality and quaintness? It's always so much easier when permission to build goes through local council without too much ado. And that's more likely to happen because citizens are inconvenienced to attend for innumerable reasons: jobs, children, illness, et cetera. Remember Stop 22? Strong numbers of people thanked us for canvassing and victory. I myself brought in over 700 petitions. I went to doctors, nurses, antique places, people that I knew, who I knew could not be within this room. Keep the trees, the green space, down near where I live. Concentrate on unoccupied buildings within Williamsburg. Why not create many parks? Plant apple trees? How about Bradford pears? Or more daffodils? Let our charm touch locals and visitors alike. The hoopla about building, building should be directed elsewhere. That convenience CVS moved way out on Richmond Road, so we’re going to build all these people’s places? I’m 72, almost, and I’m telling you, there are no conveniences, and I don’t think they need to be there. It’s a choice where you live. I leave you with this statement. Are we diminishing, quote-unquote, the character of this quaint, hopefully still, city?
All right, thank you. Could you provide your name for Ms. Scott to record?
Nancy Sparrow.
Nancy, thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lori Wheel, 412 Harriet Tubman Drive. Thank you for this chance to address the issue. I’ll try to be clear, considering the complexity of it. I do reside, I’m there on the circle there, our property backs up to the yellow RDT, which you want to turn to RS2. We understand that that means that it could be a park, and this is a wonderful thing. However, I’m here to tell you that our back deck, for 10 years now, has opened onto that space, and I’d just like to tell you a few reasons why it might possibly not make a very good park. It’s very marshy, it floods when it rains, the hills are very steep, it’s very narrow, it’s full of storm drainage pipes and grills, whatever you call them, it’s landlocked, and it’s very narrow, very steep hills. So I guess I’m just asking you, please, to take my word for it, that this does not look like a park area. When it rains a lot, the parking lot of the church floods into the back. Now, that said, so that’s that little tale that Mr. Nestor referred to. That said, I would like to make a case for why the RDT, the blatant, is a good place for a park. We’ve heard a lot of talk about it, keeping it as a green space and such. I’m sorry, we had a little history lesson earlier, I’m going to give a little science lesson. Most of us probably do not know, there’s an Osage orange tree on that lot, very rare in this area, probably the only one. There are magnificent gigantic trees that are certain, certain, to go with any development. And we do have a heritage tree program, and I actually did approach Mr. Hunger about that, and he assured me, “Well, this is being considered, so we can’t do that.” It’s a fantastic tree. It has a juice in the fruit that is as strong as and as effective as DEET, D-E-E-T. Beautiful, all right, so anyway, enough of that. All right, so if we think of smart growth, preserving and increasing open space, here’s our opportunity right here. Preserve those trees, keep that open space. What about a downtown park? I see bicentennial park up on the topping block, I’m sorry to be so emotional right now. What about a downtown park? Think of how it fits with the library and the community building. It’s just a natural, to me, but I am prejudiced, I admit it. To me, it’s a win-win-win, to keep that space there. And I do have to ask you, please, to consider, of the people standing in front of you and are speaking today, who are the voting residents? Who are the people in those, in that little neighborhood? We talk of scale and character. Who are the real people in that little neighborhood that abuts that property, right, that perfect property there? I must admit, as residential scale and character sounded like a blank check to me by the end of it, from where I’m standing, too subjective, much too subjective. And if I may end with just a little addition to the history lesson we had earlier, Williamsburg was a completely planned community. Governor Nicholson, and that’s why that town is still there, the way we see it, I’m talking about the historic area. Perfectly planned urban development, first one, if you will, and it sits as it is today, as it was planned, and that’s why it’s a treasure, and that’s why it’s valuable. So, I’m sorry if I wasn’t loud enough, I hope you didn’t miss what I said, but thank you very much. It is, it’s very exciting to be here, to see citizenship and everything in progress, it really is, but I ask you from the bottom of my heart to make the right decision for the citizens that are here now, have been here, and will be here for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Anyone else wish to speak? Sandy?
Sandy Lindahl, 688 Counselor’s Way. I am just really impressed, first, with the comments that have been made. I’m impressed with the way you are listening and carefully tuning in. I have a question, what is the hurry? Must these, must the vote be taken today, and must these decisions, particularly of the complex areas, the two particularly complicated and complex areas that are being discussed? Is it necessary that this be decided today? I heard several things that certainly would be valuable for further investigation, further evaluation, and consideration. That’s my first question, about what is the hurry, and does this have to be voted on today? Maybe I’ll have to meet with Mr. Nestor afterward to get that answer. But I really want to thank you all for the countless hours that you spend for all of us, and I also want to count to very much appreciate the fact that you are open to listening to all of us, and we certainly are a varied group of speakers. So, most of what I had to say about character and corridor and everything, it has been mentioned by others, so why repeat it? I have some real concerns about becoming another homogenized town, which we have a lot of in our country. However, I have every faith that together we will keep it unique, and in character, and beautiful. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you all. Keenan Kelly, 700 Landrum Drive. I just wanted to speak today as a junior at the college, and I’ve had a couple of years of experience working in the city and speaking to people in the city. One of my favorite experiences here at the college has been interacting with citizens in the neighborhood council of Williamsburg. I think that there are a lot of benefits to that. I remember last spring, there was a meeting held at the college ran by my good friend Daniel Waltrip, where we got to engage with students and members of the city in a real conversation about what are the different views. And I think that this type of interaction is essential for the city and essential for neighborhoods. A lot of the concerns I’ve heard today are extremely valid, but what I would say to that is, students want to be part of the city, especially students that go out into the city and don’t live on campus. That’s only 24 percent of our student body, the undergraduate student body. If they are going out into the city, it’s because they want to be part of the city. So I encourage, as all my friends that live off-campus, and I know in my role in the Student Assembly in the past, I’ve encouraged students to speak with their neighbors, to come to some sort of communication, so that way when we have problems in the city, they can be resolved between neighbors rather than through other means. So I encourage members of the city and students to do that. In addition, I think that these changes are essential for the economic, continued economic building of the city. Things like Tribe Square have been tremendously successful. Mixed-use properties are very successful, and I think that it’s great that we have different point of views, and that’s what makes Williamsburg so unique. I heard the comment, with all respect, about a homogeneous community, and will never be that, and I think that’s what makes Williamsburg beautiful, is that we have students who are very passionate about what they’re doing at the college, we have retirees, we have families, we have young professionals, and I hope we have more young professionals, so that we can continue to encourage the economic development of the city. Thank you very much for your time, I urge you to support this. I’ve worked with many students, I know at the Planning Commission, my friend Meg Swentshirian and I got 22 letters from students who are interested in these specific proposals and would like to see them passed. I don’t know if that’s in the record, it’s in the record from the Planning Commission, but there are many students who would like to see changes like this happen. Thank you very much, and I respect all comments from the city, and I encourage you to vote for the measures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to speak? Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone, mayor, council. My name is George Brown, I live at Christmas Addit's Place, 411 Harriet Tubman Drive. Williamsburg is my home, I was born here 70 years ago, traveled away to school, after school, returned here, and then seeing the country also. I returned here because I love the beauty of my hometown, and I still love being here. And what I’m asking is very simple and plain, could the green area adjacent to Christmas Addit's Place remain the same? I’m a resident of that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Welcome.
My name is Joan Vaden, and I live at 402 Harriet Tubman Drive, and I live adjacent to the green area. My backyard is behind it. I’ve lived there some 38 years, because the community is 38, will soon be 38 years. And one of the things that really bothers me is the fact that, you know, rezoning this to mixed-use and business, well, and they talk, it was said that, you know, they don’t have to allow about five feet from business and houses, the houses that’s being built. Well, you know, it would upset me to, you know, look out my back every day and see all of this going on, and, you know, the whole green area destroyed. So I’m just asking, you know, it’s been there for 38 years, can you please let it stay there? Because it’s beautiful, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaden. Would anyone else wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, staff and audience members. My name is Jimmy Zhang, I’m a current sophomore at the College of William and Mary, and I live at 200 South Boundaries Street. Now, I just wanted to get up here and thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak today, to voice some of the opinions of myself and my fellow students with respect to this proposal and the comprehensive increase of density throughout the city. I echo the sentiments of my good friend Keenan Kelly, and I also believe that engagement between the student body and the neighborhood of Williamsburg and the people, the families and young professionals who live in it, is extremely crucial. I think that many of you all might not be especially familiar to the extent to which students are involved in the neighborhood. Students are extremely passionate here at the college. We care a lot about our city, about our state, and about our country. We believe that we definitely have to be engaged in this study to participate in it. That’s why so many students live off-campus, that’s why we send residents in these areas. We believe that students are also parts of the community, right? Even though students transition in and out, students will always be a huge part of this community, and we believe that student interest must also be taken into account when evaluating this proposal. This proposal is not necessarily going to take away every ounce of green space, right? We believe that in order to move forward and take into consideration these density increases on a case-by-case basis, this would be the best way to go about things, and be able to erect better housing options for students, while at the same time maintaining the various access to parks and other green spaces on campus. Students also love parks, we love green areas, we love being able to interact with neighbors in the area, and I guess I, more than anything, understand and appreciate the neighbors’ concerns about having government intrusion off of their private space. My parents were activists at Tiananmen Square, I truly believe that private property and access to civil liberties is crucial in our state and our government. I believe that as students, we have, we have to have access to these housing options. Options on campus are severely limited, they’re forcing us to buy a meal plan while on campus to contribute more to the school’s revenues. We believe moving off-campus would allow us to better interact with the neighbors and give us better opportunities to participate in the affairs of the city. Again, I understand and appreciate everyone’s concerns, I love different people interacting together, that’s a crucial part of our democracy, and I certainly hope you all will take our concerns into account. Thank you all so much for your time.
Jimmy, thank you very much. Would anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah, my name is Ray Paul Pirate, and my brother Richard Pirate lives at 408 Harriet Tubman. I’m here to speak on his behalf. My brother had a stroke five years ago, and the green area over there, I took him off the sidewalk and put him in the grass area. His health improved, and he still likes to go back there. So I would appreciate if you all would leave it, you know, green for him and the rest of people of Harriet Tubman, because it’s nice and early back there, and he likes it, and he does walks it, and I took him, like I said, I had him on a walker, I took him off the walk and put him on another walker wheel that he can sit on when he gets tired, and it has proved his health, and you still have a certain ways to go, and I would appreciate if you leave it green. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
David Cramble at 201 Harrison Avenue. Well, it has been a thoughtful presentation, and I have to say that with respect to O2, I do hear those concerns. The key here is in what would actually happen, of course. The point is, we need to do something to revitalize our downtown. We need to have more people living downtown, we need to strengthen the balance between young professionals, families, and residents with students, so we maintain the mix, which I think the students are for, are all for. So the question is how to do it. And we like the special use permit, but I have to say, I’m not sure we are getting, using it to its fullest, to actually figure out how to have a special use permit, encourage the kind of development that we would want on any one of these parcels, to meet the goals of both the residents and the mix of more, of an appropriate balance of all of these different groups, from students all the way up to retired people with families and young professionals. So I think we really have to think through how to use the special use permit. Now, with respect to, and that’s particularly important on the property, the O2 property down on South Henry. With the property here, I mean, the yellow area, I mean, to make it a park doesn’t mean people are going to walk through it, it would, could very clearly mean the yellow area would suddenly be taken over, is to be cleaned up with all the things that are there, with enhancing the rye trees and taking out the weed trees and making it a gorgeous green area. I mean, from the dimensions, not knowing for sure and having walked it, I mean, let’s make the most of it in terms of green space and designate it a park, which, as I said, doesn’t mean there’s baseball diamonds or people heavily used for picnic tables or something, although you might put a picnic table or two there. With respect to the LB1 area, we’re dealing with key commercial streets downtown, and I totally am sympathetic with the backyards of people on this property, but we have zoning balances. There’s a vacant lot near my house. Are you then going to have me come here and say, “I don’t want something built there, and you need to change the setbacks?” I mean, we have setbacks to protect each house from what’s built next to it. I mean, we have setbacks to protect each house from what's built next to it. Now, I agree that if something rather than another house is built there, then one should consider increasing the setback. I have no problem with buffers and plantings and so forth, but that doesn't mean that that entire area shouldn't be allowed to be developed. What we want to hear is creative ideas, and the whole point of the special use permit is to get creative ideas presented. And I really regret that all of the people who worked and talked over all these meetings with the Planning Commission, which unanimously supported this, let's not forget all of that while we have some particular interests being brought to bear here. They're not here. I don't know, maybe because it's 2:00. I actually was teaching. I cut my class short just to get here, to tell you the truth, but it was appropriate because I was at the end of that unit. So I want to make it clear that I think we should support these things, albeit perhaps with the O2 being put off, and let's really work on how we're going to have the special use permit meet all of the expectations of the people who live near it and the people who want to live here and the downtown businesses, and we go for a more vibrant downtown, which is what this whole thing is. And with respect to history, history is good, but we use history and we move on. So because you said what you said a year and a half ago or whatever, I think it's perfectly fine. At the time, that's where I was too, but I'm not there now, and I want to see us move forward, and I want to see us really figure out how to use the special use permit so that 90%, if not 100% of what everybody wants can actually happen while at the same time we have increased vibrancy and a more dynamic downtown. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
My name is Jim Spence. I'm a resident of Councilor's Close. I wasn't really planning to speak this afternoon, but in light of some of the comments that have been made, I thought I should. First of all, I'm a faculty member at William &amp; Mary. I've been on the faculty for almost a decade. I love students. Having said that, in my considered and respectful opinion, I submit that I don't think it should be the responsibility of the city of Williamsburg to provide housing for students. That should be William &amp; Mary's responsibility, not the city of Williamsburg's responsibility. Now, in addition to the traffic and parking issues that were referenced earlier, and I'm speaking with regard to PCR 13002 because I am the Councilor's Close homeowner, student lifestyles do come into play. I was a student once, and students are students, and they do things that you expect them to do. And if PCR 13002 is going to end up with rental units, which is likely, which in turn will lead to student rentals, then the student lifestyles will come into play, and it will be a definitive impact on the Councilor's Close neighborhood. Certain of the homes in Councilor's Close are literally yards away from the planned O2 area. So bottom line, in my considered opinion, the negative impact that the passage of PCR 13002 would have on the Councilor's Close community is not fair. Not fair that homeowners there who have invested a lot of money, have a vested interest in the community, it's not fair for them to be so negatively impacted. Their home values will clearly be negatively impacted. So I urge the council to leave in place the eight units per net acre that currently exist. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Would anyone else wish to speak?
If not, I will close the public hearing. Last chance. If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council. I'd like to do two things. One, to ask council in light of the protest that's been submitted, if we might do the The protest deals with PCR 13007, so I'm going to suggest that we deal with that first. Then that rezoning, which is a rezoning, that property would be affected by the text changes in 13001, 13003, and 13004. So I might suggest that, second, we deal with those three. So it's very clear to council and particularly to the public, first, we're going to deal with the rezoning of the Blatant Property, 13007, then next, deal with the three that affect the LB1 and RS2, that's 13001, 13003, and 13004. And then, third, consider the remainder, remaining four, which is 1302, 1305, and 1306 and 1308 as a group. So if that's acceptable to council, we would do that. But before we do that, I'd like to go to council to help us understand what exactly it means to protest, where is that in the city charter? How is that different from sort of normal rezoning procedures and so forth?
The protest provision is found in the city charter in Section 36.1. This is a provision of the city charter. There is no equivalent provision in the state code. This has been in the city charter for many, many years. It's happened one or two other times based on staff's recollection. This would be the second or third time that it's occurred. It specifically provides that a property owner or a percentage of property owners whose properties are either adjacent to or within 100 feet of a property to be rezoned have the right to file basically a petition, as long as they meet the requirements of the petition, then that requires council to have a heightened voting standard. So instead of a bare majority, it requires that at least four members of council approve the rezoning before the rezoning passes.
Anybody have any questions on that? Now, a protest has been submitted, but not, we've not been able to certify that it's met the requirements, is that?
We've looked at it, but we haven't come to a final decision about that.
So I would come to council and ask, do we want to proceed as if this is a valid protest and go forward with that?
My opinion is we can vote on every one of these individually if we want to, whether or not there's a protest. So separating one or more of those out doesn't have any impact on the overall result.
No, it simply helps to clarify what the decision is about.
Splitting them out is fine with me.
What about accepting the protest?
I think that's fine. I think we should accept it.
Okay, so we'll accept that. Okay, so let's come back to council for a discussion about PCR 13007.
I have to reorganize my thoughts.
Well, sorry. Before we get into any specifics, would we like to have a general discussion? And then, yeah, why don't we have a general discussion and then come to the particular ordinances in the order I've suggested? So, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Share a couple of thoughts and ask your indulgence if I think it's a more, and you can come back to me a little later on. Mr. Nestor used the terms scale and character several times in his presentation, and it seems as though the audience today, at least the folks who spoke to us, had different interpretations of what scale and character might or might not mean. What we do know that's objective with the zoning is that we still have height restrictions in the city. We still have setback restrictions in the city, and in certain areas, there are also floor area ratio restrictions. What that means is regardless of the density, a building can only be of a certain size, and if it's of a certain size, the square footage doesn't change within that structure. If the square footage is the same, then the only impact, the density can't have an impact on the amount of green space surrounding the building. The only thing it can have an impact on is how many individual units are located within that building. So if we have a, using very round numbers, if we have a 10,000-square-foot building, it can have two 5,000-square-foot units, it can have four 2,500-square-foot units, or it can have 10 1,000-square-foot units, but it's still a 10,000-square-foot building. The advantage of the increased density, and this goes to the question of, does it make a difference for young professionals or recent graduates from the college or current students in the college who may want to own their own property, who may be graduate students who just want to invest in the community? If you take 10 units and divide the fixed cost of the land over those 10 units as opposed to over the four units of the 2,500-square-foot unit inside, you may not have any more bedrooms. You could still have three bedrooms in each 2,400-square-foot unit and have 12 bedrooms and have one bedroom 1,000-square-foot units. But by dividing the cost, the fixed cost of land over those 10 units, you reduce the overall cost of the construction of each one of those individual units, which makes it more affordable. Now, it's not going to be a clean scale. There's going to be some economy generally with, on the land value when you get a bigger unit, but it's the affordability that matters to the young professionals. I know some folks who I've met over the past few years who marvel at the cost of a single-family home in downtown Williamsburg, and they look at it and they can't understand why the home is so much more expensive than the same home would be two or three miles out in any one of our surrounding neighborhood, neighboring counties. Well, the reason is because people want to live downtown, and it's the demand, it's the interest, it's the desirability of the location that drives up the cost. That drives up the cost of the land, which drives up the overall housing cost. If we can find ways to make the housing more affordable for young professionals and they have a place to live, I believe more of them are going to choose to move into the downtown area from the surrounding jurisdictions. And that's not to at all disadvantage James City County, York County, it's just to provide more housing options. So I think Dr. Cramby will point it out, and thank you very much for ending your class early today, by the way. It's creating that appropriate mix, that balance that we all talk about that seems so elusive, and that's one element of the housing stock that, from my perspective and in my opinion, seems to be lacking. But it doesn't mean that we're going to have bigger buildings, it doesn't mean that all the trees are going to get cut down, and it doesn't mean that all the green space is going to go away. I happen to live in one of the areas that's being considered for rezoning, and I don't know that it's necessarily going to have a huge impact on my family's life or experience living in the city. I do know, I do have a few anecdotal observations, though. When I'm outside, whether it's playing catch with the football or watching my girls ride bikes or just standing at the bus stop with my daughter in the morning, I see very, very few people walk by. Most of the traffic that I see are people in vehicles, oftentimes Mr. Foster, early in the morning in his truck, but there just isn't that walkability. In fact, we don't even live in a neighborhood. Now, it's our choice to live where we live, and we were in a neighborhood, and that was fine, but there's no sense of neighborhood along the stretch of South Henry where we live because nobody lives there. Our building has one full-time residential unit, some of the surrounding neighborhoods. A lot of them, a good percentage of those neighborhoods are second homes for people who are here just a portion of the year, and it's a sense of emptiness that I think we can see most drastically in the January, February, or particularly January, when the tourism is low and the college is not in session, you can walk up and down the streets of Williamsburg and not see a soul. And that's really unfortunate because that saps the life out of the downtown area. That's why it's hard to get businesses to provide the basic services that residents need in that downtown area. That's why in some ways it can, you know, the blatant property, blatant building was initially cited perfectly for the services that were around it. Those have eroded over time, and that's really unfortunate. I think by creating opportunities, we're not demanding increased density, we're not even setting, we're not setting a cap. So what we're doing is we're creating an environment where we open the door to creativity. If a developer can come in and say, "I want to show you a plan that I have on a beautiful way that this property can be used that goes to 16 minutes per acre," that can now be considered. Under the old zoning, it couldn't even be considered, and we could say, "Well, you can always rezone it when the plan is submitted." Nobody's going to go to the trouble and the expense of developing a plan through all the legal processes, get an attorney, get an architect, hire the engineers, and do everything when the zoning doesn't even allow it because it's, the odds of it getting rezoned for a particular plan are remarkably slim. What we're trying to do here or create, or what I believe the Planning Commission has tried to do through months and months and countless meetings and interactions with the public and conversations amongst themselves, is to create the possibility for new ideas to come in on how we can creatively redevelop some of these areas that could use it. Now, just because something is rezoned doesn't necessarily mean it's going to drastically change, and this is what's going to take me to the blatant property. We did have a proposal that was on the table that I thought was a terrific plan. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for your leadership there. Unfortunately, in the current environment and the competitive nature of a variety of housing, of funding streams that would have made that plan possible, we did not succeed. Maybe we will in the future. But the point is, I know the people who own that property, or at least the people who are charged with the responsibility of handling the ownership of that property. That property should be managed and developed and redeveloped and maintained for the, to maximize the possible use of the people who currently live there and the populations that potentially could live there in the future, because that is a type of housing that we absolutely do not have enough of in this city. And there are a number of ways that can happen. That's not going to happen by putting in an office building. That's not going to happen by putting in a shopping center and totally displacing those residents. What will allow it to happen, though, is a density flexibility that allows us in a very sensitive way to the surrounding environment, put in a facility eventually when the funding's available that can accommodate more of the people who need it, and at the same time, I'm perfectly comfortable, as I've said repeatedly, and I said, as Mr. Wheel quoted, in doing everything we can to maintain an appropriate buffer between whatever's developed there and the rear of the homes in the Christmas Addit's neighborhood, and also looking at some common public use that can be a park. It can be a park for the residents in the blatant facility, and it can be a park for the entire community where everybody can go there as they choose and enjoy it at their leisure. And right now, that one sliver that we're talking about, I think Mr. Nestor may have referred to it as the tail, it is marshing at times when it rains. That can be fixed. The runoff coming off of the parking lot can be handled. It can be channeled into an underwater storm sewer component, and then we can resolve the marshiness, and we can make it into a suitable park, we can put a trail in there, and we can make it accessible to the entire community. As it is right now, I'd venture to say very few people ever go back there. So what we're looking at here is the opportunity to maintain the green space, and you can actually get greater green space retention through a higher concentration of density. It's the suburban nature of some of our downtown areas that really can be the greatest destroyer of green space, because the more suburban the layout, the more streets that are necessary, the more parking that's necessary, and the less natural space that we end up with because we end up with all the little manicured yards that go along with each individual home. So I think there's a lot to like about this plan. I understand that there's some hesitation. I appreciate that, but I think that the opportunities here outweigh any of the downsides that I see, and I'm in support of all of the changes as they've been presented.
Scott?
I'm going to overlap some of Paul, but just, I don't think today we've talked about the broad scope we've given while we're here and how the different elements of this downtown plan have come to fruition. It's been a goal throughout this plan process to look at downtown and essentially create vibrancy, and the key to that vibrancy are people. Why do people love Williamsburg? It's because there's a unique ambiance, and for me, essential to that is being able to live, visit, easily walk, and transact in commerce close to really the keystone of this community. The tools that this plan provides, I think, all speak to that. Today was mentioned, Paul touched on this, that density is averse to green space. Essentially, we've lost green space downtown because we had, have such low density, you know. I think Mr. Rinaldi used the phrase, either by design or by accident, you know, downtown has, you know, people have left. You know, Mr. Nestor had some pretty stark numbers in the early part of this planning's process about the number of people who live downtown today compared to 30 years ago. It's striking. This kind of segues into a discussion about who wants to be here? People just like yourselves, anyone who's talked about how much they love living downtown. There are hundreds of people behind you that would love to be able to experience the same ambiance that you do living in Counselor's Close, people your own age, and as far as the young professionals go, the question was raised. was raised, well, where are they? Or, you know, people aren't going to come here. Well, I do agree, we have difficulty attracting new, attracting and retaining young professionals. But the ones who are already here are numerous, and it's my peer group, I hear this on, you know, hear this regularly. They would love to be within walking distance to downtown. So it's essentially my vision for attracting young professionals to downtown, or let's let the ones who are already here immigrate in. And one more thing to clear up, this aversion to rental units, I myself am a renter, and, you know, because someone lives in a rental unit does not disconnect their care and hope for this community. In fact, there's a number of folks who have lived in this community their entire lives, who have lived in a rental the entire time. You take a number of the houses on Mimosa, there are people whose parents lived in that rental, and now their children live there. I mean, to me, that's pretty impressive. Now, I understand, you know, there are issues with college housing, but, you know, I would argue that we're in no way a homogenous group. And as far as, you know, yes, they will, they may likely be some element of student housing downtown. But I don't believe it is just a William and Mary objective to house students. It is a community objective, and William and Mary is a huge stakeholder in that community. As pointed out, 24% of William and Mary students choose to live off campus. That's choosing to live in our community. And, you know, we need to own that. As far as the discussion with the blatant lot, Mr. Braxton provided me about a month ago with some interesting history about, the history of that lot. And it has not always been an open, open field, open lot. There were people that lived there. There were businesses there. You know, if you, we can't be selective in the history we choose to remember. You know, there was, that was a significant portion of commerce for this town. You know, I 100% understand folks wanted to protect their view and the ambiance of that community. I think that good things can happen on that lot and still do that. Just overall, you know, I've heard so many different themes today about what people like about downtown, and the tools in place in these changes only work to leverage that. And I can't, can't say enough about how optimistic I am. So.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, my, the two councilmen before me did a great job encapsulating kind of my thoughts. For me, having lived here a long time, like many of us here in the room, I see a lot of people moving out of this downtown area. And what we're trying to do is to encourage more people to move in, creating that vibrancy and having more of a livable city. I think the greatest, greater threat is not doing, is to not do these changes. Because what's going to happen if we don't make, create opportunities for people to develop new business, develop new, different types of opportunities to live, people will continue to move out, and will lose that residential base, and will just become more of a historic museum surrounded by a few houses. And that's not really what I think we want in that downtown area. We want to have that creative, vibrant area where different people from different economic statuses could live. And if we don't do this, I think we're going to continue to see the erosion that we've seen over the last 30 years. So.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to support these changes as well.
I too am in favor of all of these changes. Just a couple of things. Merely by chance, when I was driving around today, I was listening to Kathy Lewis on WHRO. She has a noon program. And I think they were talking about Fort Monroe, I'm not sure. But the conversation had to do with how to get vibrancy into a community. And the way to get vibrancy into a community is density. And it was a really fascinating discussion, as usual, when you're driving around, you have, you get where you're going before it ends. But it was a very good conversation. In terms of the blatant building, I was actually on the Housing Authority when we applied for that grant. And it was a lovely design, and it is too bad that we got turned down. But it also occurs to me that the people who live in the blatant building, and as somebody pointed out, we need much more of that housing, need more services than there are currently available downtown. There used to be two drugstores. There used to be an A&amp;P. There were places people could walk to get the kinds of things they needed. So I think commercial development with the people who live in those buildings in mind would be very valuable for that particular area, because the people who live there need help, and they need services. In terms of Counselors Close, I was not on the council, or even the Planning Commission, when Counselors Close was built. But I remember very well, I have a number of friends who live on Newport Avenue, who were appalled at Counselors Close because something was being built in their backyard, and they didn't want it there. So things change, things happen. Counselors Close is a wonderful addition to the community. I think it's great. The people on Newport News were not convinced at the time, at all. I think what we're giving ourselves with these changes, as somebody pointed out, are options. And we need options to make the community better. I'm also very convinced by the Planning Commission vote. The Planning Commission worked very, very hard on this, much harder than I've worked on it. They work very hard, and I think that vote is very telling. And finally, one of the speakers said, "What's the hurry?" This has hardly been a hurry. This has been going on for over a year. And there has been ample time for people to think about it, talk about it, read everything about it. So I don't think there's any need to wait, and I think we need to do this now.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. This type of citizen participation is what makes Williamsburg such a great place to live. And thank you all. I know everyone doesn't agree, but basically, we've come together, we're exchanging ideas and moving toward consensus and hopefully improving the community. I'd also like to, again, thank Planning Commission, because as Judy suggested and others, they've put a lot of work into thinking about this community and thinking about its future. And this comprehensive plan is the result of that. And finally, I'd like to thank our planning staff, Reed and Carolyn, for their yeoman service in getting us to this point. You've done a lot of work, and it's, and we all very much appreciate it. I won't say a whole lot more than my colleagues have said, because I think they've, they've touched all the points that I think are important. They've touched the importance of downtown vitality, enhancing downtown vitality. I think they've touched the points of creating options and opportunities in this area, creating ways that creative ideas can be put, put into play. And all of that while providing what I think are sufficient protections for the community as well. So I, again, like others, support this. And with that, we'll move to the various components of the.
Can I exercise my right to say one word?
Anybody may exercise their right to say.
There was a comment, and I just want to make sure that people understand about the parks and the zoning on parks. Parks still have to be zoned something. And Mr. Nestor, do we, can you tell us, do we have any kind of zoning that denotes parkland?
No, parks are allowed in various zoning districts throughout the city. But there's no park zone.
Right. So Bicentennial Park is the example. It's currently zoned LB3.
Correct.
And we're, in this range of zoning changes, it would go to LB1.
Correct.
But that does not indicate any intention on the part of the city, or city council, or anyone, to change Bicentennial Park from any other use than a park.
No, and it is, it is specifically identified in our comprehensive plan as one of our passive parks. And it is shown on our future land use map, the city's official policy guide, as parks recreation, parks parkway, and open space land use.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, that this rezoning in no way impacts use of that property.
Good. Thank you. Okay, let's, let's begin with PCR 13-007. This is the blatant building rezoning from, let's see, let me find it here, from RDT and B1 conditional to LB1 and RS2.
And this would be proposed ordinance 13-11?
Dash 11. So it's PCR 13-007 and proposed ordinance 13-011.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 13-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Hi.
Aye.
Mr. Pond.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Chris, that meets the requirement given the protest. Okay, thank you. The next order of business are the, the three proposals, 13-001, 13-003, and 13-004. These are PCR. And that would be proposed ordinance 13-005, 13-007, and 13-008. These deal with the resident density in B1 and LB1, to allow senior housing in LB1, and to extend the downtown parking district.
And you want to do these as a group?
If that's acceptable with council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt proposed ordinance 13-05, 13-07, and 13-08.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
The final group we'll deal with are PCR 13-002, 005, 006, and 008. These are proposed ordinances 13-06, 09, 10, and 12. And this is the residential density in RDT, the South Henry Street property, 319 South Boundary Street, and 218 and 220 South Boundary Street.
North Boundary.
North Boundary Street, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinances 13-06, 13-09, 13-10, and 13-12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Again, thank you all very much for coming today. We appreciate that. Our next public hearing is the budget hearing. This is the proposed adoption scheduled for May 9. And we have two parts, the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2013, and the proposed water rate of $4.80 per thousand gallons.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. Today is the formal hearing for the proposed budget. As indicated in your agenda packet, you have copies of the advertisements for both the public hearings. The first is on the overall budget, which appeared in the April 3 edition of the Virginia Gazette. And then also, public notice was included for the proposed increase in the water rates in the March 23 and March 30 Virginia Gazette. So you have those as part of your agenda packet. Today is just the public hearing on both of those matters. The next step in the proposed budget process would be our work session, which has been scheduled for April 29 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jody. And we had a presentation on the budget at Monday's work.
Yes. Mr. Tuttle presented his budget message on Monday.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Two separate hearings.
Chris, can we do this as one hearing, or do we need to do it?
You can, as long as she designate that you're opening both public hearings.
Okay. Any questions before we go? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing for the operating capital budgets for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2013, and the public hearing for the proposed water rate of $4.80 per thousand gallons. Anyone wishes to speak to either the operating capital budget or the proposed water rate, if you please come forward and state your name and address? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for any questions, comments.
So disappointed. Somebody might have something to say, actually. But one thing that struck me from, well, a lot of things were interesting about Mr. Tuttle's presentation on Monday, but particularly the disparity between the combined water and sewer rates for the city of Williamsburg and any other jurisdiction in the region. And the closest one is James City County. And they're way below the other jurisdictions in the area. And we're even well below where they are with this increase. So I'm pleased the way staff has managed the utility fund over, I guess, for as long as it's existed, and dedicating that money directly to the facilities and the delivery of water service to the residents. Because that's got to play, that and the foresight of council many, many years ago to purchase the Waller Mill Reservoir, has created an environment where we're able to retain these remarkably low rates and still raise the funds necessary to meet our debt obligation in order to have the possible right for future water purchases should we hit those difficult times of drought. And I think that's something we can't lose sight of and need to remain conscious of, that the more things we can do with time to ensure that we have a sustainable source of water for this community, the better off will not only be now, but well into the future. Because we really have a debt to pay there prior to council.
Just to follow up on that, one of the things Mr. Tuttle pointed out was that these other locales with that higher rate are using that as a revenue source, whereas we don't do that. And I think that's important for the general public to understand.
Very reminiscent of the General Assembly in a lot of ways.
Well, and again, I think, I think the budget presentation on Monday made it clear that, you know, we're seeing some positive signs. We're still not back to the budget we had before the Great Recession. But we are operating in a very fiscally sound manner and that, and continuing to provide the highest quality of services to our citizens. And that's ultimately what it comes down to. So again, I thank staff for the work that's gone into this. Now, again, Jody, would you go over one more time the process from here?
So now that we've completed the public hearing on the proposed budget, the next step is council will have an additional time to discuss the proposed budget. We've scheduled a work session for April 29 at 5:00 p.m. There'll also be another opportunity at our May work session for final discussions between now and the May work session. Mr. Sarah, our finance director, will provide counsel with any updates that need to be made to the proposed budget, based on new information that we've received since the budget was released. And then at the May meeting, it's anticipated that council will take action on the proposed budget.
And, and the budget is available to the public on the city's website?
Yes, it's available online. The full budget, just go to the city's website.
Any further questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Our next order of business are reports. And we have first the monthly financial statements. Jody, is there anything in particular to?
I just wanted to remind council, we discussed at last month's meeting revising the financial sheets in regards to the room meal and $2 lodging tax to reflect when the activity actually occurred and when the revenue, what type of revenue was generated based on that activity. In years past, we had when the activity occurred, when the money was received. And sometimes it was difficult to follow sort of, and get a sense as to what that activity was. So when you look at your new green sheets for this month on the financials, you'll see under room meal and that $2 lodging, that we've revised the sheets to reflect when the activity occurred.
Thank you. Any questions on the financial statement?
Yes.
Department operating reports, Jody and.
Nothing to highlight, but we're happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. It's not, then city manager reports, and we have two. The first is the Page Street Underground Wiring Project.
Going to ask Mr. Clayton.
Mr. Clayton, welcome.
Mayor, members of council. There we go. As you, as you folks know, the city's had a fairly aggressive commitment to underground wiring along our entrance quarters. We've removed some 34,000 feet of overhead utilities at a cost of $12.5 million over the past 30 years. And I can speak to all those 30 years. The Page Street project runs the length, the entire length of the Page Street, from the Page Street Bridge to Caplaning Road. the Page Street Bridge to Caplaning Road, as you can see here on this overhead here. It's the length of that's about 1,600 feet. We've received estimates from all of our utility company. The total cost of the project is $935,846.70. A vast majority of that cost is with the Virginia Dominion Power, whose cost is $827,000. Verizon's cost are $38,000, and then Cox Cable is $35,000. And finally, we were going to put new streetlights along this quarter, and that cost is about $35,000. So the total is, like I said, about $936,000. These are estimated costs, and we're required to pay the actual cost. However, we don't anticipate much of a difference between the actual and the estimates. We've gotten pretty close on those in the last several years, so. As far as the project, the length of the project, Dominion's work will take about six months, Cox and Verizon will follow up after that work's done, and theirs will take about three months. So we're looking at about nine months here, and there is some thought that if we did prove this today, that Dominion is kind of, I guess they've got some contractors in the area or something, and they're, they're pretty much perched, they could start pretty soon.
Great, terrific.
That's probably about all I have to say. And the recommendation reads that city council authorize city manager to proceed with the Page Street Underground Wiring Project.
Great, thank you, Dan. Why don't you stay there in case there are any questions?
Okay.
Got a couple of questions, Mr. Clayton. The Dominion Virginia Power component of the cost here is, I don't know, 90% of what it is. Is that because they're charged with doing the excavation and putting in the underground facilities at the cable and telephone, then just run their wires through? Or why is there so much greater?
Their infrastructure is much larger, the cabling is much larger, they put these big manholes in for access points. The other cable, as you know, the Cox Cable was very small, and Verizon, they've gone to the real small cable, they, there's just not that much work involved, so.
So we're looking at about $1 million for less than a third of a mile?
That's correct.
That's just an amazing cost. Is this, is this stretch on Page Street particularly complicated or expensive because of the intersection of the wiring, or is that just...
There's probably a bit of wiring, Richmond, this, these costs, I think for the power company alone was about $450 a foot. We have been up as high as $600 a foot up on Richmond Road. But, you know, overall, it runs between, well, maybe not quite as low as $200, probably $300 to $600 a foot. And this is kind of in that neighborhood. Actually, this, this is one of the projects that's listed in our franchise, and in the franchise, we're kind of getting a break, believe it or not. In fact, we're having, we're having to do the trenching and whatnot, but it's taking down the wiring and installing the wiring by the power company, that cost is on them, because we negotiated that with our 20-year franchise we had.
And how disruptive do you expect this will be to the adjacent property holders and to traffic on Page Street?
The first part of the project, from the bridge there up to halfway, the second street, a little, maybe a little further, is on the left side of this ring here, left side of Page Street. And they're going to be out of the roadway for the most part. There'll be some stuff coming in and out and, you know, holding up traffic, but the work itself is outside of the pavement. And the same thing for the other part of the project, which is on the other side of the road. So it's, there will be some disruption. I'll tell you that if we do get started, you know, sooner than later, June tends to be a good time to do this work, so we're hoping that maybe we can get in there and get some of this harder work done by the power company.
Thanks. Scott?
It's obviously an enhancement to the community to get these power lines underground. I mean, you know, it's a stark difference when you see that they're gone. And so I think all of us would, you know, look forward to that day. But there is an impact, because commonly, there's just off the street where the power lines connect to these main lines on Page, they still got to hook up to something. And so there's usually some bigger poles with more wires on them, and what comes to mind is, next to Suter's Furniture, there's, you know, big conglomerate of several poles that weren't there before the Richmond Road power lines went underground. And so generally, it impacts some residence property or a business property. So I guess my question is, how do we minimize that impact? Is there any thought given to that?
I know what you're saying, in some cases, that does have, they got to up a pole and back out. I don't know that we've had any real big, you know, of all these projects we've done, I don't know of any blowups by the businesses or residents we've worked with over the years. We've worked pretty closely with them and whatnot, coordinating. Is that...
Well, I think it's, I'm glad to hear that you do have some coordination. I guess I would like to see, just to know that there's some thought given to the, kind of the collateral impact...
Oh, yeah.
...to putting these power lines underground, that there is a residual effect in terms of aesthetics and whatever we can do to minimize that.
Yeah, there's a lot of cooperation, and the power company's been very, very good with that, and so are the cable companies, so.
Right. But generally, there's little option to where that pole is and, you know, because it's a necessary...
Right.
Yeah.
They can work some of the front enders and move this thing here or there, and, you know, the biggest things you're going to see out there are some transformers, of course, and there's some, I think there's one or two switches, and they're pretty big boxes. Those are, count the six by six kind of thing, so. But they tend to go, you see them when they first go up, but then they tend to fade into the landscape.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks, Jody. Dan, thank you very much. I guess I have one question. On, when you turn on the second street, there are wires that cross the road there. Are we going to be, you know, those are more intrusive than above ground on the side, so...
I think what we're going to see here is there is a crossing right there at Page that's going over to Second Street. That strand going to the first pole on Second Street will come down.
Okay.
That pole's pretty far down Second.
Yeah.
It's probably 100 feet or more, so then that'll be overhead.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Dan, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize the city manager to proceed with the Page Street Underground Wiring Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nitsen.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
This is the first step toward changes in the Northeast Triangle, so thank you all for this. Dan, the next is the asphalt overlay schedule.
Another big chunk of money here. Council, members, mayor, members of council, as we do each year, staff is advertised and we receive bids for our annual asphalt overlay project. We've had three companies attend our pre-bid conference, and normally we only have two. There's another paving company has kind of come into town. However, we only had, our main two guys, our main two companies, Branscombe and Basic, submitted bids. Branscombe's bid was $271,819.75. Basic's bid was $294,598.75. We have four streets on the schedule for this year, Monticello Avenue, Mount Vernon Avenue, Mucka Court and South England Street. We're planning to begin the work in May and be completed by July. As I say each year, I try to explain that the bids are really based on unit prices, and they're multiplied by our estimated quantities. So, for example, the bidder provides a cost per ton for, say, for the asphalt, and we provide an estimated asphalt tonnages. So the final cost to the city will vary from the submitted bid as it will reflect actual tonnages used on the project. In other words, we collect all the tonnage tickets from the thing, and we multiply that tonnage by their unit cost. So we base everything on their unit cost. We have the money in the FY13 Capital Improvements Budget to cover the cost of the project. The low bidder, Branscombe, well qualified to perform the work, so recommend that we move forward with the bid.
Dan, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Clayton, does this go from, on South England Street, does it go from Francis all the way up to the private property?
Goes to the end of France, end of where we, the public street is, yes, sir.
Wow, that's a long, that's a long stretch. It's in pretty bad shape.
We've got a lot of cooperation with the foundation in there with buses, there's a lot of the major bus routes, part of our problem there is some major bus route, and we've got some pavement moving in there.
And what sort of contingency do we normally have in this...
Well, in this case, we've got, the budget's got about $400,000, so we're in fine shape there. And there's some thought that, you know, without coming back to council, we can actually spend about 25% in addition to this bid. The bids came in pretty good, you know, so we might add some more, add some more streets if we can decide which ones to do.
And of course, you're always very effective, but do you find that the bid, or the estimates that you provide on the tonnage of asphalt are within a certain range?
I would say 10%.
Okay, good.
You know, we estimate, say, an inch and a half of asphalt, and when the guy puts it in, it's going to be two inches, three quarters, you know, it's pretty close, though.
Thanks. Scott?
Full disclosure, paving in South England has nothing to do with me moving there at the end of May, so.
Okay. Okay. Jody, okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Branscombe Incorporated for the 2013 asphalt overlay schedule based on unit prices and the amount of $271,819.75.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nitsen.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Next order of business, city attorney reports, I believe we have none.
Does Mr. Clayton not have any more money for this?
He's spent, I think his pockets are getting close to empty. Next order of business, unfinished business, anything to come before? Okay, any new business? Do we have any? That leaves us to our final agenda item for the day, which is open forum. Time for anyone who wishes to speak to council on any matter. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. I'm seeing any, I'll come back to, I believe we have a closed session?
As a matter of fact, we do. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per subparagraph 1 concerning appointments to boards and commissions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nitsen.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Mayor Harmon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Friling.
Aye.
And Mr. Foster.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess.